Welcome to the Village of Buchanan February 4th, 2025 meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Whoops, I can't get, I'm stuck in here. Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, right, thank you. Okay, so first, we're going to start with the approval of the minutes for the December 3rd, 2024 Board Meeting, and also the December 17th, 2024 Workshop Meeting. Any questions, comments?
I have no questions.
No questions?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
All right, on a motion, I'd like to approve the minutes for December 3rd and December 17th of 2024. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Just remind me, I'm sorry. Trustee Wheeler is not here this evening, but he is on Zoom, and also Trustee Baez is not here, but they're both on Zoom. Comments from the floor? Agenda items only? No comments? Okay. So, under new business, we will be hiring this evening, Mr. Jordan Macaluso Stubblefield as a laborer. So what I'd like you to do, I don't know, Mike, if you can get a picture of him, so people know who our new highway person is going to be. Wave hi. So I'd like to make a motion to hire Jordan Macaluso Stubblefield as a laborer at an annual rate of $45,000 as of February 18th, 2025 contingent on passing all hiring requirements of the Village of Buchanan. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard, and I know you've been working part-time for us, and you work well with all the guys in the Highway Department, so welcome.
You were highly recommended as well from Scoot, so.
Any speeches that you have prepared? Okay, all right, I just wanted to give you that opportunity. So, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
And you don't have to stay through the whole meeting unless you're really interested in staying, so. But you're fine. Okay, thank you. And who do you have with you this evening? I didn't ask. Okay, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet both of you.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Okay. The next, I'm gonna make a motion to open the public hearing regarding parking restrictions on intersections. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Aye.
So, the board has been going back and forth on this, and we're not going to close this public hearing this evening. There's a lot more information that we have to gather. Originally, Trustee Stewart brought this to our attention. He had seen some things on Tate Avenue, near the First Street area where Dan lives in that area. And so, there were a list of streets originally that we were looking at more closely. Last meeting, it was mentioned that all the intersections would be included. So tonight, the board is going to talk about it. Also, we're gonna, since it's a public hearing, we're gonna put it out to the audience and see what their thoughts are. Like I said, we're going to leave it open. I don't think a lot of people really know about this yet, so of course, we want everybody's input. So, where, I just want to ask, because we just left it at the workshop. Are we still including all of the intersections that we're going to be addressing?
I don't think we necessarily have to include all of them. I think,
I don't think so.
You know, but what was made, brought to our attention this week, and thanks to Stephanie, was that there is a law on the books that states at intersections that have any kind of a traffic device, whether it's a stop sign, or a flashing light, or a traffic light, can you just read that off, Stephanie? It's 20, it's gotta be 20 feet, you get it, you can't be 20 feet from the intersection.
Yes, however, what the state law says is traffic lights, not traffic lights, signal lights on the side of the road. Yours is hanging. So I did some research on it, and believe it or not,
So a traffic light?
It's the side of the road. And I looked up, and there's some opinions out there on it saying, ah, the legislature probably did that because it's at eye level, and people are more likely to see the traffic light. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. So yours at that crosswalk?
I think First Street and Fourth Street are issues because of the buses. Now, I don't know what else anybody else is experiencing, but I've seen some, some real close calls, okay, with kids getting off the school bus and, you know, cars just parked where they're not supposed to be parked.
So,
My recom-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
My recommendation was that we do it on every street, and it's just a recommendation, it was an idea that we put it into the code because of emergency vehicles. Now, you came out with something that was, was very helpful, and a lot of that is already in our code, where, but the opposite side of the street is not. So it would be a stop bar, stop sign, and you're saying 10 feet back. So, on the opposite side of the street, you know, where it's the incoming traffic,
Right.
would then, you would be able to park on the corner, but if there was a car stopped at that stop sign, and there was, and there was a car parked on the opposite corner for emergency vehicles to get in, it would be an issue. Even buses. So, it's not every corner, the stop signs and the stop bar are already implemented for, by DOT specs. Correct, according to what you're saying, it's the opposite corner which would cause an issue. You know what I mean? So, as you're come, the corner coming in, and the corner coming out, if there's a car stopped there, and there's a car parked on the inside, there's no way for a fire truck to get in.
Correct.
You know what I mean? And, and we took into consideration, the police did, 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 did the research, they collected some data. The Fire Department also came here and recommended 30 feet at the minimum, which is, is all, it's a great idea, but it has to be, you know, we'll go by the DOT specs, which is already in our code, obviously. I didn't know that, and I'm, I'm thank you for the information. But, is it on every corner? If you made it on every corner as a code, is it in our code? Then we could put the signs on the opposite corner, correct?
What your code, what your code says is, except in an emergency, no vehicle be stopped or left standing or parked within 10 feet of any crosswalk. So if you have a crosswalk, that's fine, you have a couple, or street crossing. I mean, if you're crossing the street, like, so I'm not sure what that means, street crossing? It's not a crosswalk, so I'm assuming that means where you cross the street.
Yeah, it was probably meant for that, you know, exactly at that intersection, because,
But it does say 10 feet, but you can amend that. You can do 30 feet.
Well, I think we need to look into the code and maybe make some amendments to it, because, you know, this is, it's, it's vital to the idea that we have here. I, I feel that the, the crosswalks are evident, you know, in the circle, we have crosswalks, we have stop bars, we have stop signs, you know, there is no parking in the crosswalks, it has to be 10 feet below, and the stop bar is behind, behind the crosswalk, which is making it, you know, even farther back, which is good. So what we have in the circle works. It's the side streets where,
It's Tate that you were concerned about.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Teresa was telling me that there's been some complaints on what, by the group home on third?
Yeah, on the top of Third Street.
That that becomes-
If you come up to the top of Third Street, and you try to take a left, it's very dangerous. There's no sight distance at that point, because what's happening is the group home is parking not only on one side of the road, but both sides of the road. So it, it's, it's a dangerous intersection, and also Chris Mason had come in here last year and had mentioned that intersection also.
Yes, he did. And if you enforce that 30-foot restriction, it would give you, your optical would be more sufficient on making the turn.
Yep.
It would, it would clarify the optics. And exactly what Teresa's talking about is kind of what I'm saying, is like, you know, if they're parked on both sides of the road, your vision is blocked pulling out into the intersection. And it's, it's, we have plenty of room to park. It's just to clear up the corners, so we don't have an accident.
It's common sense to just clear up the corners.
It's, it's just a, it, it's, for me, it's, it's, it's pretty basic. You know, if we have to change the code, then we look into changing the code, and, and I would love the, the public's input on this. You know, and,
And we could actually mimic the state law.
Yeah, Stephanie has the code numbers.
It's in, it's chapter 189, four. It's called Parking, sorry, Parking, Stopping, and Standing in our code. Yes.
189-4.
Yeah. 189-4. New York State also has vehicle and traffic laws, which, which I was looking at. If you wanted to amend the code, I would suggest to you guys, and I would send it to you to adopt some of those, they're very, they're very good. It just depends on where you want them. If it's, is it every corner on Tate? Is it up the side streets? Is it all over the village? Depends on what you want, because I don't know your village enough to know. Do people need to park, like, in front of their house, or they don't have parking on a side street? Are you gonna stop all of that? So you tell me, and I'll make it work.
I think, I think the intent is safety here. It's, it's, you know, I mean, I pulled out of my driveway to come down, to come here tonight, and both, both sides, okay, on First Street, on First Street, on the corner, First Street and Tate, they're right at the corner. One on one side, one on the other side. So if, if an ambulance has to get through there tonight, or, or an emergency vehicle, they're not getting through.
Okay.
Well, I think that's what sparked this whole, this whole discussion. You know, I feel that we, we just are, through the recommendations of the Police and Fire Department, that's why we're following up on this.
So I, I happen to have the original of when we first started talking about this, there was a list that was compiled. What I have here is Catherine at Albany Post Road, Henry at First. So here's, here's the question. When we get to Henry at First, that's also Westchester Avenue, Henry at Second, Henry at Third, Henry at Fourth. Lot of trouble on Henry Street, lot, lot of problems up there, right? It's really a nice street, I got a nice neighborhood, thank God.
Is Henry at Fourth such a problem, though?
Not really, so.
You can see, I mean, you got a sight line.
And you usually don't have people parking there at that intersection.
It's Third Street, that's the problem.
Yeah, it's, it's dangerous, that, that corner is dangerous, as Chris Mason had pointed out to us. So, you know, we're looking, you know, I just, I just want to understand from the board, you know, exactly what are the intersections that you feel are hazardous and, and a danger? Then we had,
Stephanie wants to add a question.
Oh, I need you to clarify. So Henry goes this way. Here I am, because I don't know. And you're talking Fourth, or Third, or Second, or whatever.
It's a T intersection.
It's a T. Where are you, are you doing, you go right, there's no parking 20 feet, you go left, there's no parking 20 feet. What about on?
Is it at the whole intersection you're asking, or is it just on Henry?
Right, right. And are you doing that everywhere? Because at the bottom, like, what is that, First that goes into Henry, or Fourth, whatever you're talking about? At the bottom, when you come onto Fourth, are, you know, you're coming off what?
Tate.
Tate. So you're gonna have probably 20 feet there, too, at the bottom. Then you have a little parking on Fourth, and then you're stopping another 20. If that's what you want, that's what I, I can write that. I just need to clarify it in my head, what corners, and is it every corner everywhere?
Is it four corners, right?
Because I don't know your parking situation, I don't know the people that live on Fourth, maybe park, you know, on the road, not anymore, because, and maybe that's the problem. But maybe on some roads where you see that, you can say 10 feet, you know, 15 feet. So it gives a little bit more between, but you can still make the turn?
But this is bringing up a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Good questions, but, so either, you know, I know, Dan, this was something that you spearheaded, whether you go out and you look at these intersections and then come back to the board and report, or I know a lot of municipalities will do a traffic study, they'll have a traffic person come in and look at the intersections and make recommendations.
I, I think it, some of the areas are, are pretty clear, okay? Third, Third and Henry is a problem.
Right.
You have that written down?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I think Fourth and Tate's a problem, I think First and Tate's a problem.
So Tate, yeah.
Tate's just not wide enough in certain areas.
And that's a concern when we do our roads over, and we put in curbing, I think we're very much narrowing our roads.
And then we have, and then we have Church Street and Henry.
Yes.
So, take it for what it's worth. But you go by there in the mornings, and, and during the day, and it's a free-for-all.
So we have to, we have to compile a list, and, and the residents in that area, we, we should be sending out some type of letter, dropping some type of a letter to let them know that this is a potential thing that the board is looking at.
And anywhere else anybody thinks that there's a, a problem intersection? Diane?
It'll be a sign that says, no, no parking from here to corner.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and that's where, wherever we choose to, you know, and this goes to the public as well as, you know, that's why we're leaving this hearing open, to figure out what, what impacts your area. You know, if it's, if it's, if we could fix it, let's fix it, you know, and, and the communication from the public here is, is key to this.
Would you come up to the mic, please? I'm sorry, Diane had spoken before.
Hi, Lori Perch.
Hi, Laura.
As far as signs go, if you say there's gonna be a sign at every intersection, it's gonna look like a city.
No, 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 not.
We don't want signs everywhere. I thought we were, I thought last time we talked about this, I heard you talking about it, you were discussing color coding things.
Markings.
Right.
Right.
That's okay, if you start putting signs up everywhere,
And have sign pollution.
It's unsightly.
Yeah.
I just had to say that when you said, yeah, we'll put signs everywhere.
There's gonna be markings of some sort, right.
With paint, it's great. The other one, you know, I don't know. As far as the intersections go,
No, I don't think the markings are the issue.
Lori, Lori speaks.
So it's, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lori.
I say do it at church, First, Second, Third, Bannon, or everything that intersects Tate Avenue.
Tate.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna make sense, but especially the top of Third, because it's on a curve and it's blind, totally blind.
And I understand the sign issue, but Anthony just brought up a good point, it's a matter of what complies with DOT. So.
And the signage would, would be on the adjacent side of the road. So the stop sign and the stop bar are already, no parking as our code is enforced right now. Like, you have to be 10 feet off of that. So that would give us the, the proper distance that we need. It wouldn't give us the total 30 feet. But so on the other side of the, on the other side of this road, that corner, that, there would be a sign there for the, not for every street, but for the sign, the streets that we choose to do it on, or the streets that you guys come to us and choose to do it on. And that would be where the signs would be enforced.
If you could come up to the podium, thank you.
My name is Patrick Quirk, I'm over on, where am I, Woods Court. So Tate Avenue, especially on the very end of Tate Avenue near Kings Ferry, when you're going to be west, and you're making that right, first of all, there's lack of visibility when you come over the little hump. Whenever there's a car parked there, especially on the side, nearest side of the street, it's very dangerous, because you'd have to come out and swing into traffic, if traffic's coming the other way. Sometimes it's parking on both sides. And for some reason, people love to park close to the corner.
And that is one of the roads that I listed. Yeah, so it's Tate Avenue and Lake Drive, southwest corner of Tate Avenue and Lake Drive.
Yeah.
So there, it's the southwest corner, so I think it's,
That's Kings Ferry?
No, that's,
Kings Ferry is at the end.
Yeah, it's from referring,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you're, oh, Kings Ferry, I'm sorry. I thought it was Lake Drive.
There's a car parked there.
Yep, yep.
And sometimes there's another parked car on the other side, so it's kind of hazardous. And it's a very busy intersection.
So you're saying the intersection of Kings Ferry and Tate?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
On both sides of the road?
Yes.
Yeah, and Nick, Nick had mentioned that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's why this is an open hearing, we want to hear what people have to say.
Yeah, because this is, you know, I, I did, I, I drive around the village every day, but I, I took a longer drive, and I, I looked at all the different intersections in the village, and just to look to see what the impact, you know, would be for the residents that live in that area. And, you know, not so much in the Upper Village, but, well, you know, you're right, the Tate Avenue corridor, the bottom of Weststress, on the Westchester Strip, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that, but like I said, the public hearing is open. I think we need to, you know, really be specific and look at what we're, we want to do. So, Dan, like, once again, I'm not sure if that's something you want to take on.
Sure.
Or, you know, so if you could just go out and do a little study on that, and look at the intersections, and, you know, report back to the board next month. And Marcus, I know Marcus wants to say something.
No, Bob raised his hand, so I recognize Bob.
All right, Bob?
Okay. Last time we talked about this, I think Anthony brought up about doing every intersection. And I think everything we're talking about right now leads up to that we probably should be doing every intersection, because we talked about what residents want. And when we start moving this traffic that are parking in the corner of First Street, they're gonna go around the corner somewhere else. So everywhere you go, there's gonna be someone wanting a, you know, a parking restriction on their corners. So I think it's better, in my opinion anyway, and Anthony brought up last week also, if we do every corner, we're, we're, we're taking care of everything all at once, not just appeasing people as we're going forward. That's my opinion on that.
I just recommend that, Bob, because the Fire Department did give us recommendations of every corner. So I just figured that when we were changing the code, it'd be easier just to do every corner with their recommendation.
Oh, and I agree with you 100% on that, Anthony, I agree.
Yeah, it was a safety, it's, I, I know we want to do what's right for the, for the citizens, but we also, it's a safety issue. And that's the only thing I took into consideration with that comment. And it would just, I, I mean, it would go from one corner to the next, like you're saying. So if you, if you took care of every corner, then you would, you'd take care of the problem in one, one shot.
Right, and if we don't, we're gonna have people asking a year from now, we want, we want that restriction on our corner, too. So if we take care of it now, it's the same problem in every corner, if people start parking, so why not just stop before it starts?
I am, you know, I know Lori Perch spoke, and I, you know, I am concerned, too, about having signs all over the village.
I, I am, too.
Yeah, I, I think I did a rough count, you might be looking, I, oh, our highway foreman is gone now, but we, you might be looking 70 or 80 signs going up, and, you know, you're gonna have, there's gonna be problems with people saying, it's in the middle of my front lawn, it's here, it's there. And it's, it's really, Lori, you're correct, it's gonna look horrendous.
I agree.
So we need to figure out if this is going to happen, what we're gonna do with this.
Whatever decision we come to, it's gotta be a, a smart decision, and, and like you said, the consideration of the signs, I don't want them up all over the village either. I don't.
I, I don't want them there either myself, but down the road, we're gonna have this problem, and we only do certain spots. And the good example is on Henry, between Third and Second. All those vehicles are gonna go somewhere, and they're gonna go right around the corner, on those other side streets.
Yeah.
So it's a tough, it's a tough situation, but.
Yeah. I just keep very concerned, I'm sorry, Bobby, go ahead.
And those people on Third Street and Second Street are gonna start saying, where's the sign on my corner? Where's the sign on my street to stop this, too? It's just a, it's a tough situation to try to resolve, but I'm sure we'll come to some kind of amicable resolution to it.
Correct. My biggest concern is, like I said, is, is around school time, when they're, when they're getting on and off buses, and you see what, what hap, what transpires, and there's like, not a lot, a lot of room to maneuver. I worked down in Maranick. I don't know if anybody saw that story a year ago, where that little kid was run over with his mother and killed. I mean, I, I don't want something like that happening here. And that's, that's my biggest concern.
Well, we're all concerned for the safety of children, and, oh, the residents, too. We don't want to see anybody getting hurt.
I think we're all in agreement that there's something that's gotta be addressed, so.
But you know what, Dan, I know you had mentioned, and, and I thought about it, it's in, on Tate Avenue, and that house across the street from you, there's sometimes a car parked there, and it's on Tate Avenue.
Yep.
And what amazes me is, as people are driving, I don't, does anybody do driver ed or learn anymore? Because I know what you're saying, the people are going around the parked car there.
Yep.
And there is another car coming the other way, but they don't, they don't yield to that car. They scoot around the double yellow line, and you're like, wow.
And a lot of people walking that road, you know, that's another issue. A lot of people walk Tate Avenue. You know, they go out to get their exercise, they're on Tate Avenue walking.
The signs are 12 by 18, I believe. They're in our easement. So, I mean, it is something to think about. And the signs are the only way to enforce it. Now, I'm not a big sign guy, I'm not trying to push it down everybody's throat, I'm just telling you, it's the only way to enforce it. And if you want this to be a safety thing, like you two just discussed, you don't want anything to happen, well, there you have it. It would have to be signed.
Yeah, you put crosswalks everywhere.
Oh, Dan, no, 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 let's not start with the crosswalks again.
I'm just saying, I mean, how is she gonna get around it?
We tried to put a crosswalk in on the bottom of Bannon Avenue, and that could ended up being the whole Pandora box, like, you have no idea. And unfortunately, you know, we couldn't do it.
Yep, I get it.
I hear crosswalks, like, oh, boy.
I said that jokingly.
Thank you. Eileen?
I was thinking about First Street going towards Westchester Avenue. As you come out of, out of the back of here, and you come to the stop sign, John, you're impacted. Lacy, Michael, Wentz is impacted, and the people next to him, so.
Yep.
If you, what's considered a cross, what's considered an intersection there? Is it on both sides of First Street, and then whatever street this is coming out, I don't even know what the name of the street is. And then you have Center Street.
Yeah.
So you're really impacting how many cars are gonna be able to fit from 20 to 30 feet back to Westchester Avenue, 20 to feet, 20 to 30 feet back.
That's where you get into the problem, if you paint a broad brush and do it village-wide, that's the issue. Because you've got some streets that just don't have the, the, the light. You know?
Yeah. I, I, that came to my mind, and I'm saying to myself, you're gonna have one car that's gonna be able to park there. Maybe on the other side, you have a little bit more, but on the part where the houses are, you're only gonna have one, one car.
Yeah.
And we discussed,
What do you do with company, then?
That's the problem. And we discussed this with, when we allowed people to park, when we allowed people to park in the roadway because of the wintertime. We discussed not too long ago that there's so many more cars here in the village. You know, it's not like years ago where there was a two-car, but, you know, there's just more and more cars, and more and more people.
The street.
And, and I know, Anthony, I, I do understand, like, the safety thing, but there has to be some type of, I don't know, you know, you, you just can't, like, totally eliminate parking in the village. There's gotta be some type of a happy medium, and is that done through a study? So we, you know, we're not just arbitrarily maybe saying everything, or picking certain streets. You know, that's just my thoughts, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is right now, and that's why we're gonna continue to keep the public hearing open.
That was the one I was thinking of, writing that little.
Listen, an open discussion is always good, that's why, you know.
It was initiated, it was initiated because of a safety issue. And people having, people over for dinner is not a safety issue. I understand that it's, it, it's not what everybody wants, but I'm just trying to, you know, the initial comment was that it was a safety issue. And we came up with an idea, and that's why we're having this conversation. If we take the safety out of it, yeah, it's, it's, it's an inconvenience for the, for the people. But, you know, if you want safety, that's the direction you have to go in. And that's what, that's the way this, this conversation started.
If there's no other comments, I would like to take my mayor hat off and make a comment. I will come up to the podium.
I will address the board as a resident. My name is Teresa Mikkabacher. I'm a lifelong resident here in the Village of Buchanan. Fourth generation, I've said this before. I am a property owner, I am a business owner. And I just want the board, when they make this decision, to understand, we have small businesses here in the village. And we don't want to hurt these businesses. Without parking, there's no business. We have empty storefronts, and this is not what we want to do in the village. We don't want to hurt our small businesses, we like to have a vibrant downtown. And this is not what we want to do in the village. Um, we don't want to hurt our small businesses. We like to have a vibrant downtown. Haven't had that since the drugstore left many, many years ago. So I'm gonna give a very quick history of the circle. Um, at one time, we had a drugstore. We had um a grocery store. We had a liquor store. We had a bar slash restaurant for many years. Uh, barber shop. We had um all different kinds of little businesses, and they were able to park in the circle area. About George would know this. I'm sure you'd come up with this, George. George is George Palmer's our engineer. About 1990, 1992, um, the village received some grant money. Um, the circle area was done over. Um, I think we lost some parking at that time. And um so what we see today is we have different businesses out there. Now we have two barber shops. We have a dog grooming place. Um, we have um a restaurant, still a restaurant. We have a gym, and we have a lot of residential. And as I was sitting out at the circle, I'm spending more time there now, what I'm seeing is there are people using the lot, going up to the village hall. That lot was done in approximately the year 2000, and it was with a grant. Half the village paid half, uh, Westchester County paid the other half, which allowed 11 parking spaces solely for the businesses at the village. So in the circle area, in that area. So but what I'm seeing there is the dog grooming people. There's two people there. We'll park in them lot all day. Um, there is the restaurant. There'll be people that park on the Tate Avenue side. So there's people scrambling, looking for parking. And yes, there's 11 spaces. But what I'm also seeing is um above the restaurant, there's people that will park there. So it's not exactly 11 spaces for the businesses out at the circle. So be careful when we're doing this, because you don't want to eliminate parking for the barber and the dog grooming place, because they actually just park there and walk in. Um, what I'm seeing and for full disclosure, I do own property out there. Um, so what I'm seeing in my lot, I have people that have businesses in the circle that are parking there. I am allowing them to do it because I do understand the parking is tight there. So yes, safety is a factor. Um, the intersection where uh coming into Tate Avenue, uh, somebody had mentioned that coming into Tate Avenue where that parking has been there ever since I can remember. Um, that's going to be one of them that's possibly eliminated. Um, then you have where the dog grooming place is. Um, you know, you're potentially eliminating their parking. And if we do throughout the village, then I can go further and talk about Lakely Avenue. There's a deli there. And they actually have three spaces. That's all they have. So if we take that parking away from them, Lakely and Broadway, not Broadway, sorry, Lakely and 9A, they have no parking. Um, if we go over by Dayrose, we have um a a auto body repair shop, um, gallon measure. So does that affect them? So this is not a one or two meeting thing. I think this is some things that we have to look at. After this evening, because this potentially affects a property that I own, I will be abstaining from any other further discussion. I just wanted to put my viewpoint out, and I just want the village board to really not hurt our businesses and keep a vibrant, you know, village downtown. And so I just wanted to mention that. So thank you so much for your time. And I will put my mayor hat back on. And like I said, going forward, I will abstain from any other further conversations.
All right, good, because your three minutes are up.
Oh, geez, really?
No, just to just to hit it, just to hit on what Teresa said, I don't think our intent is 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 any of that. It's 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 you know, that's why we're having an open a a public hearing on this is to see what we can't. I I think we're all in agreement. There's certain pockets that we're recognizing where we're seeing this issue, right? And I I really don't see the circle as being one of them.
No, I mean, initially, when we started this conversation, I said, because of the crosswalks, the circle is already designated the right way. Like it 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 has the offset, because you can't park 10 feet from a crosswalk.
Right.
So if they're doing it now, they're doing it illegally. So that's it's already it should be it should already it's already in place, this the circle. Lakely Avenue, the deli there, no, it's not in place. That would they would be affected by that, because they do use Lakely Avenue as parking.
Right.
Um, uh, 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 over a gallon measure, we'd have to research that. I mean, that is a crosswalk there. There is there is ped ramps there. At the ped ramps, you should be 10 feet. There's a crosswalk. You have to be 10 feet off of that as well. It's already it's already in place there. So wherever there's pedestrian crosswalks, I believe the code says we can't park within 10 feet of a pedestrian crosscrosswalk.
That's what it says.
Right.
All right. So the crosswalks are already offset out of the intersection about, I'm gonna roughly estimate 10 feet. And now you're getting you're getting your 20 feet anyway already as it is. So it it shouldn't really affect the circle anyway. I mean, I I I said that from the beginning. I I didn't think the circle was really an issue. Now, if we're gonna start parking cars in the circle itself, that's gonna be an issue. You know what I mean?
There's no room out there.
No, I understand there's no room out there, but you know, it seemed like I think everything that's there is okay the way it is now as as it is. I I I'm, you know, the intersections or the corners where there's a sharp right turn or a sharp left turn, where a fire engine can't swing in, the circle has has the radius to get the emergency vehicles in and out. Um, and I I don't think the circle is the issue here. I think it's Tate Avenue, Westchester Avenue, uh, Lindsay Avenue. And I think those are where the issues are. The commercial.
Henry.
Yeah, the commercial areas are pretty pretty much set as they are. And I I'm not I'm not looking to take any any money out of our small businesses. I I think that uh I'm looking to make it better. Our 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 circle and safer in our community and our private residential areas.
So what do you think? We should put up a a big parking structure? I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
We wouldn't we wouldn't be able to afford it, but you know, it's it is it's it's an it's older municipality. It's established, so it it makes it more difficult to um control the parking.
Well, as as the circle grows, we we should look into, you know, finding someplace to put more parking or extending the parking lot or doing something. I mean, the parking lot was put in for the reason that it's being used for.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is.
But it's not big enough.
But it's it was uh, I don't know if you remember, George, it was 100, believe it or not, back then it was $150,000. So 75,000 from the village and 75 from the county. That that was a bargain. That was a bargain, looking back.
It was CDBG money and then that Pico did it.
And I think it was Dan O'Neill was the mayor, wasn't he? Should I remember?
I think so.
Uh, Wilder has her hand raised.
All right, uh, Wilder?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
So good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I could not be there. I had a personal emergency that I had to take care of, but I am appreciative that I can join you via Zoom. I just want to say very briefly, I am siding with what Anthony said. We are not trying to hurt anyone. We are here because the entire conversation surfaced via safety concerns that Dan brought to our attention. And I'm certain that with every voice being heard and the public speaking to us and putting our heads together, that in the end, we will do what is right for the village, and we will not hurt the businesses in the process.
And that that's exactly what I I those are my thoughts exactly. I mean, we're not here to try and hurt the small businessman. If anything, we're trying to bring more small businesses into the community. We're just trying to take care of the the problem areas that we're seeing that, you know, are at times it's it's it it jumps off the page at you when you see it. So.
Diane Tangen?
Uh, oh, Diane Tangen, Catherine Street. Over 20 years ago, when we did the master plan, that's when we created the parking spaces at the circle. The ones that are on White Street, and they actually have parking spaces. And the same way on Tate Avenue, those in front of the gym across from the uh your ice cream shop. Um, I was wondering if one side of the street parking would help any of these areas? And there is no crosswalk on at Seward Street by the um, or across Albany Post Road by the gallon measure. There's not a crosswalk. They don't really have a problem. I walk there all the time, and they don't really have a problem, because they do have parking there that they can park. But um, I was thinking if there was ones, you know, parking on one side of the street, I was thinking specifically by the group home. If that would help anything.
It's a good thought.
Yeah, I mean, that that would help, and we need to research that. That's the problem is that there's they're parked on both sides of the street, and they're parked right up on the corner. And as you're making the turn out of that street, out of at a second, right, you can't see incoming traffic.
Third Third Street's worse, I think.
Yeah. We we that's what we're trying to avoid here. We're trying to avoid a future accident. And 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 Dan witnessed the school bus uh and children getting on the school bus where he had to go around a parked car, which puts kids in in the middle of the street. So it's it's we're trying to avoid all this, and by everybody's input, we'll get it resolved. And George, being that there is ped ramps at gallon measure, we could install a crosswalk.
Uh.
The state, when they did their when they did their sidewalks, they they put ped ramps in.
Yes, you could you could put a crosswalk.
Right.
And uh, there's gonna be some future improvements on that corner coming up when gallon measure does their work there. So they're gonna wrap the sidewalk around, and they're gonna do some. They're actually gonna remove that and redo it. So when they remove it and redo it, there's an opportunity to restart that.
George, who would do those?
So I'm sorry, Bob. I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
George, who would do those crosswalks? Us or the state?
Uh, we would have to um.
Don't they go into a intersection that they're responsible for?
We would tell the state, and we'd have that discussion with the state as to either we wanted to do it with our, we got equipment now, I think, to do it. Or if they want to say they take care of it, one way or the other. It it's a coordinated effort.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
And Diane on White Street, I don't know if you remember, several years ago, the fire department had asked for that to be a one-way street. And then it was decided not to do that, but might be something to relook at again. Yeah. Okay.
Then you get parked the whole the whole length of the street.
Possibility, yep. All right. Any other comments before I close the public hearing for this eve? I mean, hold it over, not close it. Thank you, Stephanie. Um, so like I said, there's a lot more to discuss and a lot more to look at. So if there's no other comments from the public, like to make a motion to hold this over until the next meeting next month? Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and and participating. Okay, the next is a motion to accept a grant from Perma for a 55-inch television and laptop for uh training purposes.
Uh, yeah, so um uh, Perma has released some grants, and we were lucky enough to have one for training for training. We do a lot of Zoom training, virtual training that the DPW have to attend to the police department. So uh, just to let you know, the TV was $355. The laptop was $636. But as we discussed, any grants the board would like to recognize, recognize it. So one point on the record. Um, and thank Perma for the grant. That's already been being installed in DPW, so they can actually do any Zoom calls with either Perma or any third-party training access. It'll be right there. So I want to thank Perma for that, for this, for the grant.
And then what I want to mention, too, so they have Wi-Fi now at the DPW?
Yes.
All right. So as we're doing the budget, I I'd like to once again look at possibly getting cameras or um cameras out at the pavilion and in that area.
Yes, I'm got I'm getting a proposal for that. Um, and they don't um every security camera that I talk to, they don't want to do Wi-Fi. They want to do wired to a DVR and then cloud-based as well. So we're getting prices for that as soon as I get that or release that to the board. Yes.
Because that's something we've we've talked about for a while, especially with the camp there and, you know, some of our recreational uh things there. It would be good to keep an eye on that. All right, so uh so make a motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next are, whoops, let me get to that. Justice reports for December 2024. One of them. Did I miss something?
Jack, is that something you want to talk about here?
No, not right now. Um, I'll I'll tell you why in a few minutes. Yep, but thank you. Thank you uh for pointing that out. Um, so it's uh, one of them was 1,743. I always like to mention this so that people see uh what's going on with the court. The other was $343. So those reports are received and filed. Police report, Bob?
I don't have that with me.
Okay, no problem. I'll just uh read quickly. Yeah, if you want to do that, Anthony, that would be great.
I got it, air. Um, police report for the month of December. Um 35 moving summons. There was 125, 124 calls. Um uh traffic ticket seven. 10 speeding zones. Uh, let me see here. How does Bob do this? There was 12 calls for medical aid. As that's it, really. Uh, 15 calls for property checks. Um, couple of the utility complaints. Uh, that's pretty much it. Uh, 10 speeding zones. I said that already. Not much going on, but thanks. Good, because we have a nice, safe village.
All right, moving right on to highway report.
Uh, household garbage, 82 tons. Balkan dumpster, 16 tons. Uh, total garbage was 111.26 tons. Uh, that was all that uh Christmas waste. Uh, 10 TVs, 234 yards of leaves. Um, the guys were out, you know, they did the decorations in November, December. They helped with the tree lighting, which was a big part of of our our village circle. Um, uh, they had their recent snow cleanup, which they were very effective. The the roads were were done uh as it the other night. I mean, they they got out there and and cleaned the roads um promptly. And it 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 all worked out well. Um Christmas Eve, they were out. They they did the salt thing. Um, and that's it. I mean, they had a bunch of um they picked up all the garbage in the lots. They they stayed busy through the month of December with the holiday. So thank you for all of the hard work that they do.
And also, we have some weather possibly coming in Thursday again, so they'll be out again.
Oh, and the and the salt, the he has in here the salt shed damaged. It's repaired?
Insurance company, well, we updated the insurance company, setting up this pack, so we'll do all of it.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay, wastewater plant, treated wastewater, over 8 million gallons, sludge removal, 110,000. Um, I'm glad George is here this evening. Um, I'm looking here, uh, December 2nd, Lakely Avenue Pump Station Generator Fuel Injector Failure. Um, so we had to notify Westchester, Westchester County Department of Health. A backup generator had to be bought in. Um, let's see, and December 26th, the Albany Post Road jetted by Cook for grease between Tate and White Street, which seems to be a consistent problem. And that's uh but George, if you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, um, Mayor, we uh, the highway guys go out there or the, actually, I'm sorry, the sewer treatment land operators. They tell Cook to go out there every two to three months. They go there because of the sag in the line. We're working on that. We're we're gonna do that in 2026 after we do our sewer stream plant. And they also jet the Fourth Street Pump Station, which has a similar issue. That one doesn't have a sag, but it just has a chronic uh grease buildup that they jet every um two or three months. So Cook does both of those.
And we're still on Fourth Street getting that that grease buildup.
Yes, so it's still uh, we haven't located the source. It just keeps coming, and we keep jetting it out, so.
Any other objects that we've had issues with on Fourth Street that seems to be resolved? Mop heads?
Well, wipes and other material that should not be put down the sewer line is constantly we're getting into blocks that cause the cause the grease is a bad combination.
So anybody that's listening, maybe we could put that in our newsletter. Uh, anybody that's listening, they I know that when you buy the wipes, it says that they're disposable, flushable, but they are not good for our sewer system and our lines. So please, if you're using those, please dispose them in the garbage can and not to flush them.
Mayor, just a question on that to George. Is the is the the school tied in right there at Fourth Street? Uh, so the school has the Westchester Avenue Pump Station. It pumps about halfway up Westchester. When I say halfway, between the pump station and Fourth Street, and then it goes by gravity, goes around, and it goes into the pump station. In in Fourth Street? In Fourth Street, yep. So could that possibly be the problem? I mean, there's cooking, there's you know, a lot of. The guys check it um every day. They go out there. They find so mop heads. Uh, Marcus mentioned that together was if somebody was putting mop heads down there, and they put a special basket at the end of the pipe to catch the mop heads. So because it was happening so often. And then um, they do wipes. They you can't do much about wipes. They kind of get through rates and they get through things. They're like toilet paper, so they're a little harder to deal with. They don't break down. But.
Did we inform the school of this issue with the mop heads or anything like that?
Yeah, I I think Todd and and people have been up there and talked to them about it. Yeah, I, I think, uh, Todd and, and people have been up there and talked to them about it. So.
With disposable mop heads now?
Guess not. Wow.
I mean, that would be the only logical place I could think of where it's got to be coming from.
It does. It, it comes down there. And the pumps are grinder pumps, so they grind them up, but, uh, they still get stuck.
Right.
And, uh, like I said, they put a special basket on that one to, to catch it because it happens so often.
All right.
How does one get a mop head?
How they do it, yeah.
Down a sewer.
Without it clogging at the, the toilet or wherever.
At the toilet or wherever it comes down. That's excellent point. And it does, so it's.
They gotta be throwing it in the manhole or something.
It's like, it's almost intentional, so, but.
Crazy. Okay.
All right. That was my only question I had. Mayor, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, building department. Is that, is that Bob? Oh, yes. Okay.
Yes, I don't have that with me either.
Okay, no problem, no problem. I'm just gonna do a quick review. Building permits issued, thirty-six. Inspection required for newly issued permits, thirty-seven. Um, inspections on file for permits and compliance inspections, nineteen. Uh, sixteen COs, certificate of occupancies issued. And compliance inspections for resale or refinance. There's three there. And that's what I have this evening. All right. Thank you. Oh, Buchanan Engine. Uh, this is for December twenty twenty-four EMS Assist five. And, um, mutual aid, three, motor vehicle accident, one, and with a total alarms of nine. Planning Board Minutes received and filed for October twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Zoning Board, October ninth, twenty twenty-four, minutes received and filed. Prosecutors Report, there is none this month. Is there any, any activity? Does anybody know if there's anything going on with that?
I don't either. No, I don't have an update at all. Sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. Um, Attorney's Report?
I don't have anything now. I do have one matter, um, for executive.
So what, that would be under what negotiations?
Negotiations, yep.
Um, Marcus, I hope you're gonna cover the SAM grant.
Yes.
Okay, good, because we need to. And I'm glad George is here again because I know he had some thoughts on that.
Correct.
Okay, great.
So a, a short one is, um, just, uh, Anthony brought up the salt shed was damaged by a delivery of assault by a truck damaging the cover that we just purchased. So going back and forth, finally, the insurance company has, has claimed, uh, responsibility and the check has been released. So we'll be ordering a new salt shed cover. So that's gonna be coming in soon. Um, another, a press grant, as the mayor suggested, I sent the board a list of all the available options. But at the same time, I just heard back from, um, Harkman's office a couple of days ago that if we want to go along with the stormwater system, that does qualify for the SAM grant. So I know George isn't working on that. That could be a hundred thousand dollars, which also matches four reports that we have to do. So that's an option unless the board wants to go in another direction. Just to get, at least get the information back to the state, um, uh, what project we might want to do, so I can get the ball rolling on that. Uh, and also, George, if you have a few minutes, we want to talk about the paving update as well. So we can hit both of those i- items tonight since George is here. So, um, so SAM grant first, and then we can talk about the paving.
You know, while we're on the SAM grant, I, I did look over what the options are. And so what I need to know is, does the Highway Department or Police Department, are they looking for vehicles in their budget this year? Because what I saw in that grant, the heavy-duty, uh, a heavy-duty truck, you could do with that grant. And also a light-duty truck, I think the lifespan has to be fifteen years, which isn't a problem for us. Because we keep our equipment, uh, forever until the wheels fall off, actually. Um, HVAC systems, generators. Do we have a generator at the Highway Department? I know we have a generator here. I believe it covers the ground floor and the second floor. Not sure about the third floor.
Right, right. There was a generator, we were, um, the, um, Lakely Ave, was it Lakely Avenue Generator?
The Lakely Avenue Generator, uh, was mentioned in one of the reports. It had a fuel, um. Pump that, um, stopped working and they needed to replace it. And they're saying that, uh, they're finding it harder and harder to get parts for the.
What is the age of that generator, George?
Uh, it was. Um, around nineteen eighty-nine.
Oh, so that's, that's a valid point there. So maybe that's something we want to look into.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, most of these generators now are gas-powered anyway, aren't they? Natural gas. They're tied right directly into natural gas.
It could be natural gas. It could be, uh, diesel. It could be, uh, whatever, uh, the board would like.
What's the price to replace that? We talked about that.
It's, uh, the generator, that one's probably around sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars. So, and then you have the equipment too. You have control panels and, uh, uh, switches and all sorts of other equipment that needs to be replaced for a while with it.
It's kind of important to have that generator there, huh, George?
It is.
Yeah. If that, if that pump fails.
So the, the, the village has a, a contract. So as mentioned, um, National Standby comes in, they'll provide you a generator because that's part of your contract. They'll hook it up until they get the part. So we're never at a service.
Right.
So we're always in service. And if there's emergency, it's there. So we do have that contract that Marcus, uh, gets every year. So, uh, yeah, it is aging. Parts are harder to get. Um, it's not, you don't need to do it tomorrow, but it's something that should be on something like a five-year plan.
Well, I think it's, it's something we should look at, I think, out of the list and consider.
Yeah, we need to get a number, a number of installation, cost installations.
We can go, we can reach out to National Standby and the Coles and the, and the Generax.
And I guess, I guess the question too is, would the service agreement be inclusive in that grant money?
Uh, the service agreement is separate. I don't think they, they only pay for capital. I don't, they don't pay for the service.
So the installer would be the one who holds the servicing agreement? Is that what you're looking at?
No, no, the, the, uh, it could be, it could be a national standby because they do, um, provide generators, but it could also, needs to be electrician needs to come in and hook it all up, take out the panels like Zula, who we have, who does a lot of our work, would be someone like that, or Fanning Electric. Or a couple of the other locals that we, we do.
There might be something on the contract as well. We're looking to the contract.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Maybe they're, they're, they have, obviously they have electricians, so maybe they would want to do the installation themselves.
They could. Since it's, it basically would come out and go back in. So unless you wanted to change from diesel to propane or to, no, I'm sorry, natural gas. If you wanted to do that, then it's, gets a little more complicated. If you wanted to keep it.
You gotta go back with diesel.
Okay.
Well, the natural gas, the gas line, uh, we probably wouldn't be able to tap into it. So I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, that's all.
I don't think we have enough pressure going to the sewer treatment plant. We'd have to get an upgrade on the pressure to, to, to feed that generator.
This is on Lakely, right? Lakely and.
They just put the new ga- uh, gas line down Lakely.
No, I mean, but the, but pulling off of the main to the generator.
Um.
That's gonna be a charge from Con Edison.
Oh, yeah.
A big charge.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be, uh, at least a two-inch line. So it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be, you're better off just going with diesel.
Cost prohibitive, yep. Okay, all right, good. So, okay, so there's two options.
Mm-hmm.
The generator or the, uh, the things that George had lined up.
Or even a vehicle. I think we should ask God, um, you know, what they're in need of down there. So when do we have to have that in, Mayor?
Should be very soon because, you know, we put this in last year and we're kind of at the, at the edge here. And we don't want to give up the hundred thousand.
No. Absolutely not.
Okay.
You still go, Marcus? You're done?
Um, uh, and then the, um, we talked about the paving real quick. We don't mind talking about that. We talked about, uh, Church Street. George worked out some numbers, so, uh, we need to get a determination too, because as we go through the scope of work, we're gonna move forward about the paving. Go ahead, George.
Right. So, um, at our last meeting, we talked about just paving Mills, um, Mills Street, uh, Church Street, which was around two seventy-six. And then if we add the curbs that Bob had mentioned and the sidewalk, they're about another hundred thousand dollars each. Because there's a, I sent out a plan tonight, um, probably didn't get a chance to look at it.
I didn't.
But it did, we did put some sidewalks, uh, to continue around the church and put some parking there. So it, uh, formalized the parking so that when people get out of their car, they go on the sidewalk and they go around the church. So we put those in and that came up to, uh, four seventy-six. So it's, we're way over the three hundred thousand. So Marcus and I were talking about, um, possibly doing one of the other streets. Um, like a third, maybe Third Street and do Fourth Street as an alternate. Uh, Fourth Street was, um, a hundred and thirteen thousand and Third Street was about eighty thousand. And that would leave us a little bit of money for, um, the crack ceiling that we do every year, some of the other things that we do every year, the curbs and so forth. And we'd have some money left over for next year to, uh, to do all of Church Street. So I looked at it tonight as I was going into, and it could, it could last another year. I mean, it's not in great shape, but.
And you know what, George? Um, I know Dan and I were quickly talking about that. Um. I know there's board members that really want to do the curbs, but you real, you have to send somebody out or we'll, we'll go out. Because if you go on that road, there's a school there. And so when they're letting the kids, they're bringing the kids in at like eight in the morning or, or they're leaving at three in the afternoon. I think it would be a problem on that road because they're parked way on the sides. And if you put curbs in which narrows the road, no one will be able to pass. I will, it's barely passable now and they're parked in the swale area. So that's, that's a scary area. And, and I think that's an area we should focus on because the amount of people you have on that road when the kids are getting dropped off and, you know, it's not in the greatest of shape. You, you know what it looks like. And that's in much worse shape, I think, than Third or Fourth Street. Just my thoughts, but I know, I know Bob was interested in doing curbs there, but I, I don't know. It's because of the business there. I, I think it might be a little challenging to put curbs in and unless you can keep the road a wider width and go past the swales, otherwise you're gonna, there's, you're gonna block, the road's gonna be blocked. There's gonna be no movement at all.
It, it, it does narrow down to twenty-two, twenty-two feet, three inches in the narrower spot when you do put the curbs in there.
Going towards Tate.
Going towards Tate.
Yeah.
The road really likes to be one-way. It's almost like it wants to be one-way from Henry to, to Tate. You just get that sense every time you, you see it, you look at it and it narrows. And the walls, the walls that have been there, you'll see when you look at the drawing that we put in there, the walls come in right off the property line and they go almost right up to the edge of the road and they're, they're at least ten feet into the right of way. On, on the left side and the right side, if it was just on one side, you could push the road onto the other side and kind of make it work. But it's like alternating in two corners and it makes it really, really difficult. So it deserves a harder look. So maybe even painting some lines out there and looking at it and seeing how people cross over and there's a little school, uh, was it the day school?
Yeah.
That's there. People drop off. We were looking at Google Earth pictures and you could see the cars wrapped around the church and it's, it's complicated.
I, I won't go through there in the morning. I'm just, uh, I'm scared that some little kid is gonna dart out in the road. You know, the cars are stacked up and they, you really can't see if there's a kid standing by the car. So it's like, I, I just won't go through that area. It's pretty scary.
So it should be a one-way restriction then. I mean, it, 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 it's a safety thing there as well. If you put curbs in there and it's parking spots, you widen the road to, and make it utilized that they can drop off safely because there's only cars coming from one direction. And they will, I, I'm sure that the school would really appreciate that. It wouldn't hurt them. It would only, they could only benefit from it.
No, it, yeah, going one-way in and you, you pull in, you drop off at the stop at the school, you pull out and you go straight.
Yeah.
Towards Tate. It just seems like it, all the cars are lined up and they park on the other side too during church, looks like.
Oh, yeah. And, no, even, even dropping off and picking up all day long, uh, during the week, it's, they're, they're on both sides.
Yeah. And losing one spot over there, I could imagine even if we made it safer for walking, you lose one or two spots. I know the church kind of gets upset. Because we, we did some, when we did the, the sidewalk by Lindsay, a guy came out and said, oh, how many spots are you gonna put back? We'll put them all back. Oh, yay, make sure you put them all back. Because one spot is like, you know, is, is holy. So.
Yes, it's like going back again, the, you know, more cars, need more parking.
Or parks.
You know, that's, that's how it is now. I think to look at possibly doing a one-way, um, on that street. It doesn't affect many of the residents there. There's how many houses there? One.
Well, let's look into it.
Three.
Four. Five. Look at it the next meeting.
Did you just send the plan out, George?
I just sent the plan out.
Look at the, so, talk about next meeting.
Next, at the workshop.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll look at.
I think that's a great idea.
But that road is pretty chewed up.
Jason's right.
It's, it's.
It's pretty chewed up.
A lot of people on that road and I don't want to, you know, I'm a little concerned.
One way would, would make it safer and you could almost put a, a sidewalk all the way to Tate, you know?
Yeah, you do curb to curb asphalt, sidewalk, curb. It'd be, it'd actually make it aesthetically a lot nicer.
You think there would be enough room, considering there's walls on one side?
If you're going one-way.
Yeah, one-way, you can go into the road.
Is, is a lot for one-way.
We don't want to take any, any of the, the side parking away either because I'm telling you, it's jammed all the way up the street, both sides.
So, all right, we'll, we'll take, keep looking at it.
Because if we do that, we start eliminating parking there, it just throws the problem somewhere else. And if you go around the side off of Lindsay Avenue onto Henry Street, that's, that gets, that gets a little crazy because people are running, they're, want to drop their kids off, they're in a hurry. They're, you know, on their way to work and it just, that's another, it gets, it gets very busy over there. So. Something to think about.
We'll, uh, we'll look at it with, uh, some, uh, more parking and, and one-way.
Okay.
Yeah, if. We're gonna approve the paving plan then.
Yep, we will go away from the next meeting.
We're gonna wait for the next meeting.
Next, the shop, workshop meeting.
All right. Bob, what are your thoughts? Or Wilda?
I think, I think the one-way park is a great idea, especially, you know, the road is very narrow, especially towards the Tate Avenue side. Because that's almost a one-lane road right there. You know, and I've seen the traffic there for years when the kids are being dropped off and picked up and it's just, they have a lot of students there. A lot of young kids coming in and out. The, the parking on both sides of the church are, i- is limited to say the least.
Hey, that's some homework, George. I did. I asked if Wilda, if she had any, any comments.
No, she did. I'm, I'm in agreement with what, um, George said. I like his idea.
Great. Okay, that's it. Okay, I just have, um, I just came back from the NICOM twenty twenty-five legislative meeting up in Albany. Um, some interesting things that are proposed. Um, Eric, there's, uh, Eric Singer's here in the audience today. The, uh, C-VAC captain. And it's, I don't know if you're aware, establishing general ambulance service as an essential service and support state funding for EMS providers. So that's something on, on the legislative priorities up in Albany, one of the many, many, many things there. Um, I was, um, there was, uh, something about innovative solutions to emergency medical service. Uh, Mayor Sean Patterson spoke, Chris Bradbury, who's the administrator from Rybrook. Um, and it was kind of interesting to know that not all the calls go to, uh, sixty control. Um, some of these communities are being a little more inventive, uh, restructuring their EMS. Uh, one of the things in the legislation is looking at the nurse navigator. What a lot of these communities are seeing is that, um, the calls go into, into Control Sixty, they go into, you know, the nine-one-one call. And a lot of the calls are not necessarily emergency calls. So they're trying to, one community did do this upstate, they're trying to do like a nurse navigator. So what happens, it's, uh, an emergency nurse who picks up the call and decides if the ambulance should go out. It's like how critical it is. So that's all part of this whole thing, working on EMS. Because throughout the state, you know, there's, there's some heavy-duty challenges getting, uh, ambulances and, uh, getting the services that people need, uh, emergency services. Um, a lot of them did an organizational model study. So it was kind of, it was pretty interesting about that. Uh, I went to another, uh, meeting, IMA, understanding the risks when you do an intermunicipal agreement. Uh, we do have several intermunicipal agreements. And NYMER was there, the insur- uh, a big insurance company that ensures a lot of municipal. And NYMER was there, the insur- uh a big insurance company that ensures a lot of municipalities. And it just reminded me when we were talking, they were talking about that. I know at one point the board was interested in looking at other insurance agencies and things like that. And then, Dan, that's like your cup of tea. I know that's up your alley. Um, so something for the board to talk about if they're interested in seeing uh any other insurance companies. And um and then, it was very nice, the governor invited us back to the Executive Mansion for dinner. So um it's always interesting to go there and uh see what the Executive Mansion looks like and some of her thoughts on the budget and things going on in the state and the country. So, a lot of representatives throughout the state, and it's always good to talk to the other communities, what they're doing and what their concerns are and uh how they're handling different issues. So, um, that's all I have for this evening. I'm gonna start with Bob and Awilda, because sometimes I forget when people are on Zoom. I forget they're there. Bob, do you have anything for us this evening?
I'd just like to welcome Jordan uh to the team and the Highway Department, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Awilda, anything?
Tonight, I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anthony, anything for us this evening?
Uh, no, I just a a quick, quick thing on going back on this parking thing. Like I said, we were all here for the same reason. So please come out at the next meeting and give us your input on what you need, what your safety issues are in the area. Uh, that your, where your home is, so so we can figure this out and get it done. Because it is a concern of some of us up here, and it should be a concern for the community as well. So we're not looking to harm anybody, we're just trying to make it right. And I think with the community's input, we can do this the right way. Um, and um, and get it done properly, uh, so we don't have any issues moving forward.
You know, we've always had a problem communicating with the community, so I think when we either narrow down the intersections, maybe we could uh do some letters or something, or, you know, the problem is, I like to put things into the our newsletter, but not everybody reads the newsletter. So maybe if we, it gets narrowed down to certain intersections, perhaps those people could get some type of a letter um telling them what we're looking to do.
No, I agree, but sooner or later, we have to, we have to do something. I mean, it is our job to to make this right. And with the, with the, we give the public certain opportunities to do so, but at some point, we have to do something before something happens. And I agree, yeah, I I would love to get out to the community to make us, make them, uh, make their their point get heard somehow.
Yep.
But sooner or later.
Communicate that that information.
Yeah, we're gonna have to uh make a decision on on moving forward, and um I think that's it. Um, that's it. Happy Valentine's Day. Uh, and uh, and enjoy uh, until I see you again in the workshop.
Dan, what do you have for us this evening?
Uh, just a few things. I know last meeting I mentioned the the employee handbook. Any status on that? We making progress?
Uh, we should have a draft probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
And have that draft, we can present it to the board, and then have to give it to the union, so we're moving.
Okay, great. Um, just to thank you to our beautification and Highway Department for the circle, dressed enough for Valentine's Day, it looks nice. Um, and then uh the only other thing I have to report is the progress on our St. Patrick's Day Parade, which is scheduled for March the sixteenth at two P M. Um, we are making progress in getting our contributions from our major sponsors and all of our other little local businesses. So um, thank you for all the people that are helping. We're always looking for the volunteers, anybody who wants to meet. Uh, Steve always posts it on Facebook. We meet at the Buchanan Firehouse usually on Thursday nights. But um, the next meeting will be posted on on Facebook, and um the other thing I have to say on that is the committee did pick our grand marshals and our aides. And so this year, we will be honoring as our grand marshals John Horton and Scott Horton. And then our aides will be Holly Euchler, Beth Keenan, Bob Stein Senior, and Bob Mitchell.
All right, thanks, Dan.
That's it. Happy Valentine's, everybody.
And I I'm glad you mentioned the hearts out at the circle. So our Highway Department had made those, those big hearts that you see out there. They did a fantastic job. They did it last year, and I think this year it looks much nicer, closer to the ground. So they're very creative, they're very good at doing things like that. So, you know, thank you once again for them doing that. And happy Valentine's Day, and any comments from the floor? No, we're good. George, George, did George have anything else that he needed to? Okay, yeah, because we have uh someone else in executive session. Okay, all right.
Singer first.
Yeah, I think so. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
So thank you all. Happy Valentine's Day.